I'll call the meeting to order. Thank you, everybody, for your attendance. So first up on our agenda is the report from the Honolulu Fire Department. Do we have anyone from the Fire Department? I see someone.
Yeah, this is firefighter Sheldon with Engine 25 New Anu. For last month's stats, we've had one structure fire, one nuisance fire, one cookie fire, and three activated alarms. There were no fire found. For emergencies, there was forty-seven medical emergencies, two motor vehicle collisions, and one ocean rescue. Safety tips for this month: power outages. Hawaii is fire-prone with a year-round risk of wildfire hazardous weather conditions, especially during hurricane season, which is June 1 through November 30, as we all know, will increase the risk. The HFD encourages everyone to proactively protect yourself, your family, and your property through advanced planning, understanding, and preparation in the event of power outage. Remember these safety tips. Build a fourteen-day disaster supply kit. Take an inventory of the items you need that rely on electricity. Plan for batteries and other alternative power sources to meet your needs when the power goes out. Know your medical needs, i.e. devices, refrigerated medicines, etc. And a general list is available online at Honolulu.gov/DEM. Using appliances during power outages: avoid carbon monoxide poisoning. Generators, camp stoves, and charcoal grills should always be used outdoors and at least twenty feet away from windows. Turn off or disconnect appliances, equipment, or electronics that may be damaged during possible momentary power surges or spikes. For more tips and detailed information, visit ready.gov/power-outages. And then, one more thing. Starting July 1st, the HECO will commence their public safety power shut-off, their PSPS program, to reduce the risk of fire. As one component of their three-phase wildfire safety strategy, HECO may preemptively shut off power and identify high-risk areas during periods of forecast high winds and dry conditions. This program is being utilized as their last line of defense to keep communities safe and may result in extended power outages. The PSPS, for several hours or up to several days, the HFD and HECO will continue to work with the Board of Water, and the city, state, and federal agencies to lessen the impacts for the PSPS. Any more questions? You can visit HawaiianElectric.com for more information. And that's all we have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for the Fire Department from the board? And please note that I don't always see everybody, so if I miss anybody... I see you, Mike, but if I miss anybody else, please let me know. I don't... I won't intentionally ignore you. So please go ahead, Mike.
Hello, firefighter.
Am I muted?
I'm still muted, or?
Not now. I'm sorry. When you... It looks like you were talking.
Firefighter, on the 1st of June, there was a structure fire at 62 Prospect Street. I was just wondering if a cause had been determined as of this time.
As of now, I don't think there has been a cause. I know the investigators are looking into it. And I'm sure once it... Once we get what the cause was, it'll be... It'll be published for, you know, public record. But I can follow up with that with the investigators and find out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Did I see Kathy wave her hand? Go ahead, please. You're muted right now. Oh, Kathy, you're still muted.
No, I was just saying hi to Mike. So I wasn't wanting to say anything.
Sorry. Do we have any more questions from the board for the firefighter? Any questions from the community? Harry Dunn, thank you very much for coming out and producing your report, firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Have a good night. Next up, we have the Honolulu Police Department. First up, District One, and I see Lieutenant Segusia ready to go. So Lieutenant?
Good evening, Chair Smith, and everyone in attendance. Lieutenant Segusia, representing the Honolulu Police Department, District One, Community Area Responsibility. Thank you, guys, for your time and patience. I'm gonna get right into the statistics at this point for the month of May. So motor vehicle thefts for the month of May was six from the previous month compared to burglaries were four. Previous month was zero. Thefts were two. Previous to that, EVs or car break-ins were seven. Previous was four. Assaults were one. Previous, zero. There were no sex assault cases. Graffiti cases was one. Previous month was also one, and drug offense-related arrests were zero. Previous to that was one. So your total cost per service for your particular area for District One is five hundred and ninety-two compared to the previous month of six hundred and seventeen. So there were no robberies reported in your area for the month of May. I looked into the recent burglaries for the district, because it's four. It's kind of a high number, because previously that it was zero. I looked into it, so three of them were businesses, and one was of a local area school. In regards to that school case, an arrest was made, and that case was sent to the prosecutor's office for a final disposition. And for Paula, we're still conducting the Speed Traffic Enforcement Program on Poli Highway, the STEP program for the northbound lanes. On day ones, they've been noticing a reduction in speeding citations, so hopefully the public that uses that highway are slowly learning to keep the speed down, yeah? We're currently, right now, dealing with a major power outage, since the firefighter talked about the PSPS in regards to HECO. So it's in the Chinatown Business District. HPD offices are manoring numerous intersections, but it is obvious that we cannot man all and every intersection, so we're popping flares at smaller intersection and advising our constituents to treat all these intersections as four-way stops and to proceed slowly and use caution. Yeah, per HECO, the power outage is due to a blown underground transformer. The outage will go on into tomorrow. People are also advised only to come to the downtown area if absolutely necessary. All other businesses... All other business can be, you know, done later times. It's highly advised. The safety tip for the month of June regarding... is regarding unattended drinks. With summer upon us and more young adults going out and celebrating, we're asking our community members to be more aware of their beverages. This is pretty much a growing trend on the mainland at this point in time. Cover your drinks, never leave it unattended, and never accept drinks that don't come directly from the staff of the establishment. Worst-case scenario, if you do begin to feel sick or become incapacitated, let someone know immediately, whether it be a friend or the staff, so that we can get help. They can get help for you as soon as possible. At this time, I'm gonna yield back the rest of my time and take any questions from the board members and the public attendees.
Thank you. I know Paula's having a little difficulty with her audio, so I'll ask this question.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead, Paula.
Oh, great. I thought I was gonna be dead in the water over here. I have two questions. One, and this is probably a tough one for you now. I know in February you did such a great job of getting seventeen people on citations. I wanted to know, of those seventeen, how many went to court to a judge, and how many got let loose by DOJ? Because I know the police department, when I attended the District Five meeting, that was one of the concerns that I had, because if you say, "Oh, you're only going five over or ten over," that's okay. You can go home and forget it. We'll just take it and, you know... So my question is, if that's gonna be occurring with DOJ, how far should we go with DOJ to tell them how unhappy we are of the seventeen? That's only an example, because I don't know how many you're gonna get now. I can remember doing this since 1996 with the Attorney General's Office on the Poli. So, slow down. And the second question I have is... Maybe I have three questions. Second one is, when I listen to all the neighborhood board meetings, and I know you're there half the time anyway, congratulations on your daughter graduating. The big deal is, if we're having speeding on the Poli Highway, only at the times when you folks are meeting, you know, when you get together and then the new group comes out and goes out on the highway, they seem to be picking the time when you folks are in a meeting to do their racing. And the racing has gotten really, really out of hand, waking us up sometimes as early as 4:30 in the morning. And the third question is, if the neighborhood boards got together and decided who's racing on the Poli Highway, and the big example was Poli to Waimeaalo, is there a way that we could get an undercover group that might be able to get out there and figure out if there's the same guys that are doing Waimeaalo and some of the other areas? Because until you can get the Campbell Park or whatever's gonna open up for the speeders, they don't seem to give a rip, you know what I mean? And somebody is gonna get really killed, I'm telling you. So that's my three questions. If you can map it out, and if you can find out how many DOJ let us down on, or should we just go down and talk to the judges ourselves and not tell them that HPD said, told us to go down there? Seriously, I'm glad my picture's not up on the screen. So, that's my three questions.
Okay, Paula, I'll address the first part in regards to the... What the final disposition with the citations. Normally, we don't track those things. We would have to probably go on a court's kookua. And we'd have to reference our citations with that. That's kind of comprehensive, because just realize that there's other districts, other locations that are sending in citations. We would have to really, really dig into that. And then, in regards to the disposition of the court judgment, I think sometimes it's not present on that court's kookua. So it's a little difficult. I think what HPD should just concentrate on is just going after these racers and issuing these citations for the speeding and stuff like that. In regards to the speeding on Poli Highway during off times, that's your second question. We've noticed that sometimes there's these situations where they are out there during the early morning hours. So I had passed that information on to the Traffic Division, who they use solo bike, they use stealth vehicles. But I think there's a lot of concentration on the major, the H-1 freeway, going east to west in regards to that. But I can also add the Poli Highway situation up into... towards the tunnels. Now, in regards to like these undercover vehicles or undercover officers to, you know, try to figure out if it's the same people, I think what you guys can do is probably speak with your, you know, your lawmakers in regards to higher penalties for these multiple offenses of speeding and stuff like that. I mean, in the mainland districts, in the mainland municipalities, some of them, they utilize impounding the vehicles in regards to that, right? But the problem with us is where we're gonna store these vehicles, right? But I think what we need to do is we need to, you know, penalize these people who are repeat offenders.
I think so, too. I agree. And DOJ, people say, "What is DOJ?" Some people don't even know, but supposed to be part of the justice system, Department of Justice, so they... The justice just doesn't been able... I mean, you folks are working so hard to catch all these people, and yet they go to see the judge, and, "Oh, I was only going ten over." Well, that's okay. You can go home. I think that's really wrong. Why even post a sign for speeding? We got it down from thirty-five to fifty... Thirty... Thirty-five to thirty, and then somebody changed it two weeks ago, or at the last meeting. I told Audrey, and Audrey took care of it with you folks. So I don't know who's messing with the signs, but we worked really hard to get it down to thirty, so we could be at least reasonable, but now they're coming in at over sixty, sometimes sixty-five. And once they hit those bumps, and we're gonna have cement broken all over the place in the houses. So if they decide they're gonna put in more bumps to slow them down, that's not the solution. Right now, I think that really fines are big fines, you know? But I'm trying to stand up for the police, too, because you work so hard, and then, "Oh, dear, you did... Oh, you only went over five. Oh, you went ten." Oh, pity. Oh, pity. Sorry, I'm going on and on. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Adrian has her hand up. Adrian?
I am coming. Yes, I do have my hand up. Okay, I have a concern. On June 9th, we had a person who broke into Papukalea Community Center Sunday afternoon around noonish, one o'clock. We had a staff person there. The person went in, he pulled the door, yanked the doors open on a locked center, went in and began to ransack a desk. And police were called. I need to understand why there was not a police report taken, nor was he arrested. The police walked him away, and I'm trying... I'm just shaking, so furious still, because it was a staff person with two small children. We don't know if he's coming back. We know he's mentally ill. And so to not feel that we can be safe and not know that he's not gonna go to a neighbor's house or someplace else in community and do something, and him not be taken away when the police have been called. I also called the community policing officer office to understand this. They never got a call back. But we really need to know why he couldn't be arrested, why he was left to roam in our community on a Sunday afternoon. Of greater concern was, that was when sandwich hours communication turned off phones and stuff, which left the community at greater risk and concern. But we work out of the center. We understand that he has some mental health issues, but also the concern being wrong families, greater problems that we can have. And it has to change... Now changes the way we have to be able to serve, because now somebody we're trying to help, we have to ban, because nobody took that serious but us. Can you explain to me why they walked him away and not put his... Put him in a car? I'm trying to say this nicely.
Yeah, so I... After we get done here, I'm gonna go look for that report. I wanna try to see what had occurred on that day. Sometimes, there might not be a case made due to the fact that there's no complainant.
There was a complaint. We... We, you know, I would have been there, but I can't drive, but we called in staff. Megan Kane.
Yeah, I think that might be District Five, so I think the officer from District Five would like to comment, sir.
Real quick, that was District One, but I was... I had the computer up, so I just looked at it real quick, just to let you know. It says that, um, that person that you're talking about, he receives mail at the community center, and it said he was trying to get mail. He had an argument with the person who was working there, trying to look for the ID that he applied for. And it was requested that he just moved along, because he was acting... Didn't act out like this in the past. So that's probably why they didn't make a criminal case.
Thanks, Gurney.
Megan, where are you?
I'm here. Sorry, I was the one that went to be with our staff who experienced a situation. And she was all shaken up, and she was outside, talking to the officer. I was still inside. We were trying to figure out if he, the one who broke in, had took anything. But then when I went out, she was talking to the officer, and she said, "I wanna press charges." And he said, "Oh, they've already escorted him off property." And then he was going into... We get thousands of these calls, and he used... It was a three-letter acronym that I'm blanking on right now. And he was like, "We get thousands of these calls, and we just can't press charges against everybody," is essentially what he was saying. But, and yes, to the mail thing, we do receive his mail, but the doors were locked and closed. He yanked these doors. I still don't know how he was able to open them. But he was tugging on the doors, I wanna say, three times before. The staff said that the door just flew open. He just came charging in. So he did enter a locked property.
Yeah, so getting mail there doesn't make him live there.
Yeah, I understand. I understand that. So in regards to that, I think what you were talking about was ace rate, agitated chaotic event. So this person might be under the influence of some sort of illegal drug intoxicant, whatever it might be in regards to that. But I need to really look into the report before I can make a decision in what the officers did. So with that being said, you know, I'm gonna have to defer at least to when I can take a look at the report, to speak intelligently. I know, I know the...
And with that being said, we have children playing at that center on the weekend all around. We have a playground there. So whatever the acronym may be, be it drugs or a mental agitation, to, once again, just escort a person off that is having an episode when we don't know what children will be there. We are not there, and we have restrooms that people come use. We have homeless around anyway. Our goal is to keep our community, especially our children, safe. So, and then to have to wait now for this meeting to even get it addressed, because I can't get a call back or reach anybody to find out what has occurred, just seems like, once again, in other spaces, this might not happen in the same manner. So just needed to bring it to this meeting, because as a community, we are quite concerned and don't think this is something that should happen, especially out of a center or a park where we know children gather.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Perhaps Lieutenant Segusio, might you and Adrian follow up, because, yeah, this doesn't sound like a situation that really should be dragged to next month?
No, absolutely.
And she reach out to you after the... Or at some point soon to maybe get more information?
Absolutely. I'm gonna take a look at the report after I get done with my thing, and I'll text her on the side on the chat screen, and then I can provide her that information.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next up, I see Sylvia.
Hi. Lieutenant, is there a fine for driving without your lights in the dark?
Yes, there is.
Okay, and what about cars with no bumpers?
That would probably fall under unsafe condition, but yes, there is a citation for that.
Oh, okay. So because I've been picking up my grandson in Waikiki for months now, and just about every single night, they are people driving on the H-1 freeway between the with Poli Highway and to Podo Street, and they're driving on the freeway without any lights. They... I think they think they have their lights on, because they're probably running the running lights in the headlights, but there's no, you know, taillights. And then, I'm also on Kalakaua Avenue. Every single night, I'm following somebody that has no lights on. And it's really dangerous. It's like eight, nine o'clock at night, and it's dark in some of those areas, okay? But that's what I needed to bring to your attention. And then tonight, my brother just called me, and he lives on Booth Road in Pa'oa. And he told me that he just came home from the mainland. But last week, Tuesday, on the 11th, he received a telephone call. He was on the mainland, and he received a telephone call from the police department, because a neighbor... And thank God, the neighbor saw it, and the neighbor took a video of this person. They're across the street neighbor, somebody that we grew up with, you know, for all those years. And I think, you know, he's become mentally unstable. And my brother and my brother-in-law, who lives in the house next door, they live next to each other, both and their neighbor in the back of them had to file a restraining order against this person, because what he was doing was, he was plugging up their drain, and then he was... Then he turned off their water. How many times, you know, they didn't have any water, and they found out that the water valve was turned off in front of their house? So, but on last week, Tuesday, couldn't... My brother said, he got a call, because the neighbor had videoed this and saw that neighbor carrying a hatchet. So he got concerned, and so he sort of, you know, watched and took this video. He went over to my brother's house and hatchet, the garage door, the side garage door, and he went into the garage. It was a garage as... Is enclosed. He went into the garage and destroyed my brother's generator in the garage. And so the neighbor immediately called the police, and they went over and arrested him. And my brother said, "It's a week now, and every day he's getting telephone calls, because this person was arrested." The neighbor was arrested, and he's in jail now, and he's not able to post a $50,000 bail. But this misdemeanor has been happening for over a year. That's why they had to get a restraining order. And their security camera also shows the guy going on to their property when they're not home. And, but, and he's got, you know, arrested for violation of the restraining order. But now, last week, he actually did this big damage to my brother's house. And so, I don't know. It's spooky, because I told my brother, "You know, it's spooky. You're living across from this guy, and he's now coming with a hatchet." I mean, I think now it's violence. So I don't know what else can you do as a resident?
I... Just, I think what you guys need to do was already initiated. You need to used to contact the prosecutor's office, go to court, and prosecute this guy. Oftentimes, we do generate cases, felony cases, and then the complainants, they just lose interest. And they don't... They don't... They don't follow through, and then the case falls to the wayside. Just realize this. Yeah, I wanna talk about the three-legged stool, right? So there's a three-legged stool, right? There's us, there's the prosecutors, and there's the judiciary. But there's one piece that is more important than all of those three, is that piece on the top that holds all those three legs together, and that's the community. So we need to have our community follow through. A lot of these cases that fall to the wayside is due to the fact that a lot of complainants, they just lose interest. They don't proceed, and then that's how these guys remain on the streets, yeah? So advise your brother to continue the process, contact the prosecutors, and go to court when he has.
Oh, he's not gonna drop it, because if he went to all that trouble to get a restraining order, you know, he's not gonna drop it. And I'm more concerned is because I have three rental units next to them, and he used to come over and pick the avocados off the tree, and then he would come in, and he would, with his chainsaw, and he would be cutting my tree.
So with that, Sylvia, the best thing to do is contact police services. Have an officer come out there. Stealing avocados is a crime. Cutting your tree without your permission is criminal property damage also. Go ahead and generate those cases, yeah? And then just touching back on in regards to Adrian and Megan's question from earlier before. If you ever have an experience with an officer or a situation that an officer is conducting, and and you're not satisfied with what's going on, request for a field supervisor, a sergeant or a lieutenant. Have them come out and have them explain it to you better, or that supervisor or that lieutenant will make the correction and then make the proper cases, yeah? So if there's any type of issue with any type of officer out on the streets, you're not happy with their service, you're not, you know, just in general, go ahead and ask for a field supervisor, have them respond, and take it from there.
Good answer. Good answer.
I took mine.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board for District One? Any from the community?
Thank you.
Uh, hearing none, uh, thank you very much, Lieutenant Segusio, it's your your answers are great as always and your service, so thank you very much.
Yes.
You're welcome, you have a great night.
Thank you. So next up, we have District Five from Honolulu Police Department, do we have a, I see officer coming on board now, so go ahead, sir.
Hi, Lieutenant Kiony Hong, representing District Five Kalihii, going over the May stats burglaries, there were two motor vehicle thefts, five. Theft six, car break in six, robbery zero, aggravated assaults two, sexual assaults zero, simple assaults four. Going back to the motor vehicle thefts, uh, there was one arrest on May twenty eighth. The person was initially spotted in the poly lookout area, so. He is attributed to maybe some of the car break ins, so hopefully that slows down this month. Um, regarding the aggravated assault, I'll just touch on one of them. Heard on May sixteenth at an area middle school, female teacher observed a female student using her cellphone during class. Teacher requested the phone, at which time the student threw it at her face, causing pain. Uh, the student was ultimately arrested for assault in the second degree, which is a felony due to the victim being a educational worker. There any other questions for District Five, I'm available at this time.
Yeah, do we have any questions from the board? Do we have any questions from the community? I think that's it. Well, thank you very much, sir, for coming out this evening and for your report, you're giving your report.
Thanks.
Thank you. So next up, we have the Honolulu, I'm sorry, the uh Neighborhood Security Watch and Paula, I. I guess you're online, so if you want to go ahead with your report, please do.
Yes, I'm online, but they can't, my beautiful picture won't come up, so um, just have to live with it, I guess. Um, I think that we are pretty well settled as far as. Venue is trying to get places to meet. Cause we haven't got any place to meet, everything costs like a hundred and twenty dollars for a meeting place. So if anyone has a venue where we can meet, even in a garage that has two plugs for our videos, that would be great. Um, and uh, Matt said that. He got from the last report that I gave last month where they had the Y and I meeting. Um, there were no calls after that, but that was a successful meeting and um the community really did take. Take time to come out, thank you for that. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, do we have any questions from the board or from the community for Neighborhood Security Watch? Uh, for those, I will say that for those who haven't gone to a meeting of the Neighborhood Security Watch as as done by Matt, who is a former member of this board. They're really excellent and uh their their group of volunteers do an excellent job and and a great service to our community, so. Thank you, Paula, and thank thank the rest of your team for doing that.
Chair, can I say one thing for Dr. Gill folks? When you call and you have a situation like that where a person is at your outside and you know they're not supposed to be coming in. And they continue to do whatever they're gonna do, when you call nine one one, you always say in progress. And if they have a knife or a gun or uh even um Sylvia mentioned uh. Cutting avocado or whatever the tree, that also could be a weapon. And then when you see something like that, right away you call the supervisor if you're not. And that's what Lieutenant Segusio tells you, please call and ask for a substitute. With someone that can tell this police officer that they need more help. He hit every everything on that except didn't mention in progress and weapon possibly, thank you.
Thank you, Paula. So without anything further, we'll move on to our next item, which is the Board of Water Supply. Just so you can hear better, we're gonna switch places.
Thank you. Right, good evening, everyone, my name is Jimmy, I'll be representing Port of Water tonight. Just wanted to start off with two questions from from last month. The first one was concerning. Main breaks that happened on May eleventh on Alika Ave and May twentieth on Dalseth Ave. And the the concern was there's a lot of main breaks in the area. So a BWS contractor paved the section near three one forty Alika Ave where an eight inch main break occurred on May eleventh. Our contractor is still awaiting for permit approvals to begin final paving near twenty Dalseth Ave where a main break broke on May twentieth. The work is tentatively scheduled for the end of July and if the current patch needs. Uh, attention before the final paving begins, please let us know and then we can smooth it out. And the mains on Alika and Dalseth have been problematic due to the type of pipe material, which is PVC. And the age and the upcoming water system improvement project will address the ongoing main breaks. And our second concern was the new hydrants around Kapal, Kapal Wala Place. And why there's more hydrants popping up in the area. So fire hydrant spacing for single family residential neighborhoods is required by law to be at most three hundred fifty feet apart. However, a section of Kapal Wala Place across from Liah Street is too narrow to accommodate new hydrants. So to provide adequate fire protection to those residents, an additional hydrant was installed fronting twenty four oh four. Pa'oa Road, placing it near two existing hydrants and another hydrant was also needed on Kapal Wala Place. Uh, specifically three seventy two Kapal Wala Place, which is about three hundred thirty feet from the closest hydrant. All right, I would also like to. Give updates on the Water System Improvements Project on Tuivu and Dalseth. Right now, we don't have any changes, we're still waiting on approvals from ship D. I know the start date getting pushed back is frustrating, uh, but there are many steps that need to be done before they grant us the necessary approvals. Right now, we don't foresee the project starting until after September, however, we will continue to provide the board with updates as they become available. So now I'm gonna move on to. My monthly report. The aforementioned two main breaks that happened in May, the first one happened in May eleventh. That was an eight inch pipe on three one four eight Alika Avenue and the second one was on. May twentieth, that was also an eight inch pipe on twenty Dalseth Avenue. So now, uh, and with my general water announcements, I'm gonna be talking about the annual water quality reports. So Board of Water Supply, BWS works hard to ensure that the water served to our customers is safe to drink. Each year, the BWS conducts thousands of tests on the water sources and distribution system. To ensure that municipal water meets or exceeds all federal and state safe drinking water standards. The results of those tests are shared with customers in our annual quality, water quality report. And this report will be mailed to all customers by July first. Digital copies and additional water quality information are available at www dot portofwatersupply dot com. You may also call eight oh eight seven four eight five zero four one for more information. So that concludes my report and I'm happy to take any questions.
I think Audrey was uh first, so Audrey.
Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can, yes.
Hi Jimmy, thank you for the thorough report. Um, as I emailed you before the meeting, um in addition to the May eleventh and the May twentieth, I told you we had a water main break on June seventh. And that was like, that was like, that, yeah, that was like over twelve hours on Alika. And then so from the seventh, um you guys have seven, I mean thirty days, you know, to um straighten out the road here, the street. Cause it's all bumpy, I'm digging the hole.
Uh, so.
Go ahead.
Oh, uh, I was just gonna say, thank you for the email, Audrey, I did, I did see it and um like with the. Status of the main breaks that happened last month, I will follow up with our our the right people to find out what the status is of. Um, the road that the main break happened and and. How they how they fix it.
Yeah, it's all bumpy all over going on to um wood, but also too, you know, and getting the permit, um I know for a fact, um. The place that I work, we can go to the building department and they call it S as in Sam, A as in always, I as in um indigo. You can get that to tell the building department that you're starting the job and they will send inspectors out periodically, so. You guys waiting too long for shifting, I know you guys have to get their approval, but there's other ways of trying to get the permit going. And so even R R and Y, I mean, so what, they're gonna ask for extension, I mean, they're gonna ask for um extra money now because of all of all of this?
Um. That I am not sure, um, but I'll I'll follow up with the, I'll keep following up with the status of this water system improvements project.
Okay, sorry, you gotta, I gotta ask the hard questions because we're paying uh an arminiling for water and for sewer. So if these contractors can't get their act together, well, you guys are slow in submitting for a permit. This is a big problem for all of us because you guys are gonna keep raising the prices because you guys got warming breaks all over the non-place. Okay, Chair, thank you, I'm gonna rest my case, but Jimmy has a lot of following up to do, thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you, Audrey.
Thank you, I think next up is Sylvia.
Oh, Jimmy, thank you for your report on the Pa'oa Road and Kapo O'ala Place fire hydrant. Because like I said last month, I drove to um into Kapo O'ala Place to look what was going on. Plus, that's what my conclusion was when I saw that new fire hydrant that that um. Corner house on Pa'oa Road and Liah Street was talking about and why, you know, it was so close apart. Cause my own common sense told me it was probably to service that lane because it was. Very, it's narrow and I don't know if any emergency vehicles could get in there, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate the comments.
Thank you, are there any question, other questions from the board or are there are from the community? Hearing none, uh, thank you for having your report as always.
Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.
Okay, next up, we have the filling of vacancies, we had currently have two vacancies in District One, which is uh basically the area around Punch Bowl. If anyone in the community would be willing and is able to serve, we can uh, you can volunteer or and we can find out if if you. If you're eligible after that, is there anybody willing to serve from the community? Hearing none, we can move on to our next item of business and that is a report from our uh non-board events and. First up, we have Oahu MPO, which for Ray G. And uh Ray G, uh before you start, I I had I had need to send that letter, I have it and uh the report, but it's all done. Just has to get out the door, so that should go soon. But anyway, please go ahead.
Thank you, um, actually, unfortunately, I caught COVID, so I was sick for two weeks and I. I slept right through the date, so I missed the meeting, but I did apologize. Um, but I will attend next month's meeting, but I looked at the agenda and it didn't look like we missed anything significant, so. I'm sorry, I have three computers and for some reason, the main one that I always use, I can't get the volume on, so I'm using my laptop, but. Thank you for the opportunity to report and I guarantee I'll be at the next meeting, thanks.
Thank you, are are there any questions from the board or the community?
I have a.
Yeah, go ahead, Paula.
My phone, my thing keeps going in and out, so Ray, thank you for um going to those meetings. And I'm wondering, is there ever, ever, ever um mention about Poly Highway? Um, and what problems we're having on Poly Highway, cause I know that that Ompo is supposed to take care of everything. Including ADA and everything else, right? So do they ever get their fingers into the Poly Highway and what's going on? Or is there no grumbles?
Um, there, what they do is the agencies propose projects like uh maintenance of the Poly Highway. Or um the rockfall mitigation project and I know you were, um, I know I mentioned this before. And I just want to make clear that I know you wanted um a certain portion of the highway to be um mitigated for rockfalls. But apparently, the projects that are listed on this year's report for federal funding um does not cover that section. So if you'd like to revisit that, I could um work with you and propose. That area that you've mentioned several times at our board meeting um to be covered in the tip so that it's federally funded. Um, but other than that, no, there's no other projects other than, you know, road maintenance and. Yeah, there's no, there's no money appropriated in it right now for it, it's just left left on the list so that they can, you know, fund it for the next go around, so it's like um. It's a six year cycle, that's the short term plan and then there's a twenty year long term plan. I can check the twenty year long term plan to see if um.
Is there anything ever written or anyone ever look at the ADA standards for what should be for the public? Like wheelchairs and walkers and people that can't get around in a community. Um, the Poly Highway, I brought it up about twenty times already, I gave all my pictures to visioning. Are to uh the section on aging and then there were sixteen pictures. Just for um things for even where a wheelchair can't get through. And I'm wondering, do they work together or are they just, everybody got their own complete street and their own visioning and their own?
Yeah, there's separate plans, um if you'd like, maybe we could get together just to. Um, you can refresh my memory of what projects you've mentioned to the board before. Like we can get together on the side and then I can make sure and check all the existing reports, the twenty year report and the six year report to make sure that. Your areas are addressed on it, but I I need to know what exactly um you had told the board before about.
Right.
Yeah, which project, if it's okay with you, we we can do that.
Meeting, but one of the things I was gonna ask is if we have a CIP budget, which would intertwine with the state. And with uh city and county, especially like where we're trying to cross streets and. You lost the money for the lights, so can we use CIP money on the Poly Highway?
I think your best bet for the Poly Highway would be the federal funds and that's Ompo's list of projects, so um. Let's get together, let's get together on the side and just if you could give me the information and then I can go and check and then we can. Um, report back to the board um on what projects are listed in the current reports that Oahu MPO has.
Be great, I'm sorry you got COVID.
Yeah, I'm fine now, though, thank you.
Yeah, it's a nasty, okay.
Okay, we'll work together on that, thank you.
Yeah, sure, just give me a call, I know you're busy.
Thank you, thank you, Ray G, um, next up, we have Sylvia.
Ray, um, Paula brought up something that just made me think about.
Uh-uh.
Uh, about Opa, so you know. The Secretary of Transportation, the United States Secretary of Transportation, Pete Bullock. Was here a few months ago and and Senator. Schatz also said it in his reports that I saw on um, you know, Facebook and whatnot. That they were pouring in a lot of federal money for um our roadways. So. What what's, who's getting that money?
Who's getting that money, that those monies are listed on the statewide transportation improvement plan, which is the short term plan, as well as the transportation improvement plan. Which is the um stip and tip um that Oahu MPO um administers, not administers, that programs. And coordinates through the city and the state, yes.
Is um, beside the Poly Highway situation that Paula just brought up, is. Khalia Road, the re resurfacing of Khalia Road on that plan and what about that um. Coloco Pass that's in Y and I, I mean, you know, Nana Cooley that runs between what Luulule and um. Schofield Barracks, you know, they have that. Schofield Barracks, you know, they have that pass that comes down, um, on that side. Are those projects listed on, you know, for federal funding to fix those areas? Beside, you know, some of these, um, areas that are affected by, um, the ocean, you know, along the ocean coast? Because I, I'm really concerned about the, um, that pass, even though it's not in our district. But I'm really concerned about that, that exit road that's in disrepair that goes up to, um, Schofield Barracks from the Wa'ne'i Coast. Because Wa'ne'i could be another Lahaina. There's no way to get out of there if you don't do, or they have to make the road go through at a point that would be another.
Excuse me, Sylvia. Real quickly, we have someone from.
Check on that part and put it in your, um, and report back.
Sylvia, I'm sorry.
There are all the projects.
Okay, sorry Sylvia, um, if we have someone from DOT that will, that can address that specifically right now. Do you want to go ahead?
Yes, Sylvia, hi. This is George Absetti with the Highways Division. I'm the administrator. We just had a meeting with the, the military. We've been having a few meetings with the military actually this year regarding Kaliko'la Pass. And so there is an active effort to do some improvements on the roadway to make it passable for emergency purposes. Uh, we're hoping to get that done before the end of the year. Uh, and then as we move forward, uh, so right now, the, the intent is to get the roadway usable. It's usable right now, but there's a rockfall issue, uh, a pretty severe one that we have to mitigate before we can really open that thing up with the, with the military. And, um, but once we, we can get that done, like I said, we're hoping to get that done before December of this year. And then as we move forward, we'll, um, depending on how the, the future usage that they plan, that the military and Haimea, the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency, uh, and the city's emergency management, Department of Emergency Management, once they figure out the long-term usage of that road for emergency uses, uh, we're planning on doing more further improvements as well.
Oh, thank you. That's good to hear because I, it's, you know, we're in the start of the fire hazard season. And I get really concerned about it, you know?
Yeah, no, it's a big concern. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, I, next up, I see Audrey. Audrey, you're still muted. Audrey, did you have something?
No, I'm silent. Thank you. Hi, George.
Okay, thank you very much. So, uh, is there anything further about the Oahu MPO? If not, thank you very much for your great report and we're glad you're, you're doing better. Yeah, it's not a fun thing, so let's all stay safe. But thank you for your very, very good report. So moving on, uh, next up, we have, I think, Res, or I know, Papakalea Community Report. Adrian, do you wanna give that report? Or Megan? Okay, go ahead, Adrian.
Oh, no, Megan got it.
Sorry. Didn't mean to throw you under the bus, Megan, but if you wanna give it, please go ahead.
Um, I am blanking at the moment. And Kupuna, he has anything to add?
Okay, I'll do it. Um, because last week, we took a group of our junior leader teens to Kupuna and Megan took a group of teens to the Big Island. Uh, we've ended our after-school, uh, programs for the summer. See, we, uh, we had a community member who was in the Command Mayor Day Parade and she won the Pa'ou Unit for Kauai. Our Board Treasurer won first place for Princess of Kauai. Uh, the Roosevelt High School Football Team and some of the youth from Papakalea did the lay draping ceremony at, um, for Command Mayor Day down at the statue. And, um, a lot of the community people and a lot of our staff are coming off of PEC Fest. And so it's just been a bit busy, uh, early June and we are now finished with our after-school programs. I'm planning for the next school year. Uh, we all supported and making it in May Day, so I think we've just been quite busy um, at the center with Kupuna and the work that we're doing. But like I said, most recently, the, the, um, community members that were part of the Camp Day Parade. Thank you. That's it.
Wonderful. Are, are there any questions or comments from the board or that even the community regarding Papakalea Community Center? Uh, hearing none, uh, thank you very much for your report, Adrian. We appreciate it and good work. So next up, we have our residents and community concerns. Is there anybody that would like to present a concern? Um, I had, I have one I'll just mention and that is I got our certificate for, uh, the principal, Dale Arakaki, so I'll reach out in the email and see who might, uh, be available or when we can meet with him. I, we kinda missed the deadline, you know, the out-of-school deadline before, but we have it, so we're ready to go. Sylvia, did you have something?
Well, on, on that, the school actually is on vacation, except for the office staff.
Yeah, so I have to call and see if he's gonna be in, so.
Yeah, we might have to wait until August.
Okay. Yeah, I'll call them to see.
I don't know if you guys can see this on my screen.
Somewhat.
Well, I thought it's more of an announcement but than anything. But on Saturday, August the 3rd, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, there's gonna be a Hawaii Buddhist Peace Festival in Chinatown at the Cultural Plaza, at the Chinatown Cultural Plaza on the Sunyac Sen Mall. And, um, so everybody's invited and it's something that's, um, sponsored by Weed and Seed of Hawaii and the Chinatown Business and Community Association. So, um, if, you know, I thought that I should just let you guys know admission is free and, um, there's no cost, only thing that you'll have to pay for if you buy any type of food from one of the food vendors there. But other than that, it's an absolutely free, uh, festival.
Thank you. Uh, are there any other concerns?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Paula, please go ahead.
It came to me and to my attention, I should say, that, um, the Kona people, though I know the legislators aren't there yet for the meeting, but I just wanna make it known that the, the Kona people that are farmers are very happy with what happened in the legislature. Uh, at the end where Kona coffee is being recognized by having, having to have more than 10% in the coffee. So if you're looking at buying coffee, it's recommended that you look to see exactly how much Kona coffee is in there. And this bill unfortunately doesn't pass fully or at all, probably until 2027, which is really too bad, uh, because we were hoping it would go through quickly. But, um, they're making, because they want everybody that's being cheating to calling it Kona coffee. They're cheating by 5% or 10%, so thank you, everyone. If you notice when you buy how much Kona coffee really is in the bag. Thank you.
Thank you. Sending coffee back to the mainland for people I know. I, I've been caught by that, so I know. Uh, do we have anything further?
Um, Patrick?
Yes.
On the board business, would, did we drop off the topic that, um, Robert brought up?
Yes, because Robert did, uh, never followed up. And no, and no one else on the board seemed to express any interest in fault and continuing. So that's why I dropped it. If anybody wants to put it back on for the next month, we, I can't.
Oh, okay, because I bumped into Robert right after the meeting in Costco and he said he had an emergency. That's why he couldn't attend last month's meeting. But it was something that he was still concerned about and that's the reason I, and, and he's not on tonight. So I don't know what happened. But he lives on the corner of River Street and Vineyard Boulevard, right there by the Quan Yin Temple, right across the street from Foster Garden and the Quan Yin Temple by the river. Right where that traffic light that we're trying to get in for Poli Highway.
It's, I, I don't believe that's in our district.
It's, it's not in our district, but the subject that he brought up is in our district and the one on San Antonio.
Hey, do you, do you want me to put it on the agenda for next month?
Well.
Mr. Chair, it is on the agenda. It's on E. On E, under Board Business, Proposal to Draft a Resolution.
Uh, I think you're looking at an old, old version.
Yeah, the old one.
It's not on this month.
This month's agenda.
Jimmy, you're right. Oh, my God, looking at the wrong thing.
That, that's okay.
Okay, you know what? I'll try to find him again and if I find him, I'll ask him, okay? And I think we should just leave it off until he says something again.
Well, I mean, I don't, you know, I, I have the, as, as the chair, I have the power to set the agenda. If one of the board members wants to put an item on the agenda, I'm more than happy to do it, uh, period. Uh, you know, and I mean, obviously within reason. If someone from the community, it's the same thing. If, if it's, unless it's completely unreasonable and I had something like that, I'll put it on. And anytime Robert wants to put something on, but you gotta, you know, it, it's kind of incumbent upon whoever wants to argue in favor of, of something or brings it up, they need to come out and advocate for it. It, 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 no one seemed on the board to make, to wanna have any input on that, so. So I'm kinda left with, you know, why should I keep putting on the agenda? So if anybody wants to put, well, hold on, if anyone wants to put anything on the agenda, let me know. So Sylvia, if you talk to him and you want, Sylvia, 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 please, let me finish. If, if you see him or talk to him and you wanna put it on the agenda, just let me know and I'll be happy to put it on. Thank you.
Yeah, that, that'll be fine.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other concerns?
None.
Hearing none, we can move on to our next order of business and that is, uh, our reports from our elected officials and officials. And first off, we have the mayor's representative, Director Kamishiro. Uh, Director, I see her online, so if you wish to give your report now, please do.
Hi, everyone. So I'm gonna start with the mayor's newsletter and I will insert the link into the chat. Uh, Mayor Blangiardi created an Ocean Safety Department recently and also signed a resolution to allow voters to determine if a commission should provide oversight to this new department, similar to the Fire Department and HPD. Uh, there's also information regarding updates on improvements to the city's 911 system. Uh, some, some of the important notes there are that HPD is working on their recruitment efforts to increase call takers and dispatchers to more fully staff on the 911 system. They're also testing an automated callback feature for drop calls. There's a list of resources for Hurricane Preparedness Month, which begins in June. And also information about Hiko's Public Safety Power Shut-Off Program, which begins July 1st and affects the, the west side of the island. Lastly, how the city and county is helping to support the Hawaii Food Bank. There will be a final town hall for the year scheduled this Thursday out at Waialua Elementary School, starting at 7:00 PM. And also wanted to share that the Department of Parks and Recreation is still looking for staff to help, uh, support and staff the Summer Fund Program. These jobs are an excellent way to gain experience in the childcare field, uh, while earning a minimum of $16 an hour. And I will put a link if anyone is interested or knows of anyone interested in applying for a Summer Fund job. So I'm gonna move on to follow-up items from last meeting. So the Na'amilili Street trimming, uh, tree trimming concern that was raised. The Division of Urban Forestry arranged for a contractor to prune all of the city trees at Booth Park. However, when they arrived, they found the grounds were saturated and unable to support the vehicles needed to complete the job. So Duff and the contractor will monitor the ground situation and will return when the grounds are dry enough to complete the pruning. They also wanted to mention that they are coordinating the pruning work with Booth Park staff to minimize any disruption to Summer Fund programs. Next item, uh, is the recurring issue about rental cars at 2610 Henry Street. DPP responded that they conducted an investigation on June 3rd and did not see evidence of any car rental business being operated at that location. They're still unable to locate active ads with vehicles for rent and unable to verify that vehicles on the street are being used for rental business. Um, this has come up multiple times and I did reach out to DPP and talk to, uh, one of the staff members there, trying to understand what had been shared, uh, with Jo at the, during the two phone calls that she received from two separate inspectors. So they explained that, um, they're unable to address this from a permitting perspective because there's no official business established where a permit could be revoked. Uh, they did suggest, however, that if the issue is parking and congestion in that area of Henry Street, um, that there could be another alternate solution. And so I did drive out and look at the Henry Street location a couple of weeks ago and saw that the, the road kinda narrows at that location and there were a number of cars parked on both sides of Henry Street, right in front of 2610. But I didn't see any activity that was described. Uh, I don't know if anybody was home. But it was, uh, definitely something that looked odd because there were so many cars parked right in front of the house and across the street. So one of the things the DPP suggested for the board's consideration is to request that a no parking sign be installed uh, from whatever the legal limit or distance is from the corner of the street. And, um, to prevent parking at least on one side of the street. Because what it looked like to me was if, if cars were cleared on at least half of the street or one side of the street in front of that area where it's narrowed, it would be easier to pass even if car doors were open, as Jo had reported. I don't know if Jill is on tonight, but, um, that is something that could be looked at. So, um, I did go ahead and just submit a 311 request to install a new no parking sign, um, in that area between 2610 Henry Street and the corner of Klebon Place. I think that's the name of the street. And this will prevent cars from parking on both sides of the narrow street and make it easier for cars to pass. Um, at least this might be, uh, somewhat of a solution given the number of complaints that have been submitted and the inability of DPP to address it from a permitting issue. So I don't know if Jill is on tonight.
Jill had an emergency tonight.
Okay.
Does she, I'll to let you know, but I don't know if she got through to the business. I mean,
Okay.
the neighborhood board. I'm sorry, she did call me. And
It's okay. So Jill, Jill can um, you know, either follow up next meeting or reach out to me and, and let me know if there's any other information that she was able to obtain.
As far as I can see, it should be, uh, someone should be going to the cars and getting the license plates and then putting them on to see who owns which car. Now, they, this last time, somebody came and on abandoned car that was there, or uh, somebody's car, that's an older car, had an abandoned sign on it. But it wasn't abandoned. And then they've also opened up another house across the street to rent out to do the same thing with the cars. So there are not just one house, there's two. And I think an inspector going there, smartily, smartily, or whatever the word would be, go to the house and say, I wanna rent a car. Just go to the house and say, I wanna rent a car, because some people have gone there, but they will not take credit cards. They only take cash. And they're speaking in a foreign language, so um, of course, you won't see anything if you don't know what you're looking for. You have to be able to identify each car and who the owners are for that area. And as far as the coroner for um, putting in no parking signs, that won't solve it because we've already gone through that with uh, Fire Department. The Fire Department went in there five years ago and um, said that um, there just is too much going on as far as too many cars. Even down below on Western, where cars are parked right up to the stop sign. And I've seen it myself by going down there several times.
So Paula, you're saying that they, they weren't able to install a sign at any other location to um, prevent parking?
I don't know what you're gonna do if you put in no parking at all. I don't know what the neighbors are gonna do because down on Claybon, they're already stacked up. They don't even have space to park. Some of them are even parking up on Henry.
Oh, okay. You know, when I was there, there were other areas on the other side of Claybon, not on the twenty-six-ten side, that there was a lot of street parking. And so it was very obvious that this house had a lot of cars parked in front of it and across from it. But the, the houses next door and the houses across, when you cross Claybon, I didn't see a lot of cars. In fact, that, that day when I went, there were hardly any at all.
There's, there's a lot of arguing going on down there with the neighbors. I've been there. I've seen it. Who parks where and you can't be even parking close to the mailbox? So that's another, I can go over with you as far as no parking all the way from the fourth house, back from Jill's, all the way around that corner. And nobody can park there because they said no, no parking over that area. Even Jill lost parking in front of her house. So you put in no parking, you're gonna have a real problem. Uh, that's all my, my idea.
Yeah, can, can I suggest, yeah, maybe it would be good to, to talk with Joe and you know, because this obviously is kind of a drastic solution. You might really inconvenience some of the other homeowners if, if it's not kinda well thought, thought through.
Yes.
So that, that probably, you know, if, if, if Jill would reach out. Um, Paula, if you would talk to her and maybe reach out to uh Director Shiro. And that way, you can kinda get the true feeling of the neighborhood and the layout and what the proposed provisions are.
Okay, yeah, we can definitely talk about that further.
Thank you.
If you could. Connect up. Okay, so I wanted to move on to the next item that was raised. So this is about the potential monster home at twenty-seven sixty-one Pacific Heights Road. So DPP's response was that due to recent events, they will provide an update at next month's report.
Um, there, there, uh, excuse me, Director, there, there, this is a fast-moving kinda story that there's even stuff from this afternoon that I'm gonna review with the committee. So I probably have newer information, I would suspect, unless you got anything today.
No, I, I, that's all I got today.
Okay, yeah, so I, I can report on that. Thank you.
Okay. And then the last item was concerns regarding Poly Highway. And thank you, George, for attending tonight and um, being, I see that on the agenda and item. So did you wanna cover it at that time, Patrick?
If, if that would be okay. If, if that'd be all right, uh, can you stick around? And that way, um, I can go over the monster home issue too. It won't take long, but I, because there's some interesting tidbits, but uh, if, if there's anything you wanna add at that point, please let me know. So if that would be all right, if you can stick around for a little while.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you very much.
I can take any questions.
Yeah, there any questions from the board? Paula, go ahead.
Thank you, Kim, for all you're trying to do for us.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Can we get her autograph?
Okay. All right, Sylvia, do you have something? Sylvia, are you muted?
Patrick.
Oh, I think, I think Mason, actually Sylvia, can you hold on a second? I think Mason did raise his hand quite a while ago. Sorry, I missed that Mason. Go ahead, please. Mason, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, can you uh?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I just wanted to let you know, um, they're in, in progress. They started the
Sorry, Mason, can you repeat that?
I'm sorry.
Um, I, you kinda broke up on us. No, you kinda broke up. Uh, can you repeat that one more time?
Are in progress, working on the trees already. So thank you.
Okay, so we got the
Yeah, they're working, they're still
Hey, sorry, Mason, you're, you're breaking up a little bit, but we did hear that the tree, the tree trimmers did come. And I guess they're still working, right? Okay, s- s- sorry, yeah, your connection is, is, yeah, it's not very, not very good. It's very skippy.
That's good to hear, Mason, though.
Thank you. Um, so, sorry, Mason, I, uh, but Sylvia, do you wanna go ahead?
Okay, Kim, is there? I mean, something has to be done with the number of parades in Waikiki. I was stuck two days in parade traffic. And it's not, and I would have avoided that area, but my grandson had to be at work in Waikiki. And so I was forced to go um, and drop him off and pick him up. But Saturday, it was the morning traffic and thank God I left really early, or else he would not have ever made it to work on time. And then on Sunday, when they had the Pan Pacific one, Saturday was Aloha Week. I mean, King Kamehameha. And then on Sunday, it was the Pan Pacific. And it started like at four o'clock. My God, I never got, I went to pick my grandson up and I just sat at the ho- hotel parking lot until everything cleared up and left there at six-thirty at night to get home. But I tell you, it was just awful. It was just a standstill. And if there was an emergency, there was no way that you would get help. Because traffic just absolutely did not move. It was a parking lot. And that was on Clear Road. And, and even if you have these signs that says road closed or the big sign that says Clear Road is a dead-end street, you got all these people going over there and the people at um, the hotel valet parking couldn't even get out of Hali Kalani driveway to, to get the cars into the parking lot across the street. That's how bad it was. So I, I don't know, you know, I, I think DTS needs to take a look at it and to have it two days in the row. I mean, it was absolutely horrible. But that was, that's my take.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
I can pass that on. Sylvia, but that, that weekend that you're talking about, there were a lot of parades and it was um, they were advised, DTS was advising for people to leave early, plan ahead and expect bad traffic. And it was just a combination of the different parades and events on that particular weekend.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, Mason, did you have a follow-up? I, I, I saw your hand come back up. Okay, thank, okay. I, I take that's a no. So are there any other uh questions or any from the community for the mayor's representative? Seeing none, thank you, Kim. Thank you very much. And uh, like, like I said, if you maybe could stick around just a little while till we do those item reports. And if you have anything to add, please do. Thank you. Uh, next up, we have uh Councilmember Tylos Dos Santos Tams, Representative, and I see Lisa Leonardo online. So Lisa, if you'd like to go ahead, please do.
Thank you. Good evening, Lisa Leonardo from Councilmember Dos Santos Tams Office. Um, thank you, Chair, Board and Members, for allowing me to report. Um, just a reminder to review Councilmember's monthly newsletter for information on action items that he's completed in all of his districts. Last um, month, I reported on a fire ant community meeting that was going to take place in July. Unfortunately, because of the organizations that'll be presenting and other legislators that would like to join, uh, July is not gonna happen, so we pushed it off to September. Um, we're trying to schedule in August, but right now it looks like September is the best for everybody. Um, also in September, Councilmember Kia Aina, who is Chair of the Planning and Economy Committee, um, she is trying to put out public community meetings regarding the primary urban center development plan. And I know I suggested to this um, board before about um, looking through that and trying to add things when it comes to the um, the bus routes that have been uh canceled. So um, the meetings will be taking place starting July thirtieth. Not all of them have been dated, so what I will do is, once we've got all of them um, dates and times and places, I'll provide that to this board. Um, Councilmember is trying to get for our district in September. So again, I'll update you on that. I was gonna update on twenty-seven sixty-one, but I think you have more information on that. And the last one from last meeting is one fifty-seven Ragsdale. No current update on that. Uh, we put in um, request for information again, so we're just waiting on DPP for that. And that's all that I have to report, if there's any questions.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, I will report on the uh, the Pacific Heights property, if you would stick around for that. Report back to the council member. I appreciate it. Do we have any uh questions from the board for the council members representative?
I do.
Yeah, Paula, go ahead, please.
Um, I'm wondering, um, since uh, Tyler Dos Santos uh, got the people to clean above the top of Puiva Road. Um, when are, has he thought of looking below the bridge, not below the bridge directly, but once you look to the other side of the bridge, that's all clogged up. Is he thinking of getting them to come back and do the other side to finish the job? Cause it's full of trees, just like the top part was.
Okay, he, he actually hasn't given me information on it, but I'm pretty sure that it, once I share this with them, he'll, he'll, will work on that, so I can get back to you on that. If it's be, if we've, if we're able to set it up before our next meeting, I, I'll definitely email, send an email out.
That would be great. And the second question, not question, but what's happening is down below Claybon, which I told Kim, there is a lot of problems over there, but um, evidently the church is still cutting in the stream. And now it's growing back as weeds and all the beautiful trees and plants are gone. Oh, and they were told by the arborist, arborist, as I remember reading in one of the other meetings, that they weren't supposed to be doing that, but they keep on cutting. So that might be a problem later on that he might be, should be aware of. And because he did attend that Hawaiian Stream Committee meeting and did uh, get to see some of the things that were started many years ago. I started that meetings uh, thirty-four years ago in August, I think it was, for the Hawaiian Stream Committee. That um, by the way, anyone can attend that, uh, usually the third Thursday of the month at Queen Emma. Um, that he knows what's going on behind that church, cause they were told not to cut, but they keep on cutting. And um, there's not very much foliage there anymore.
Yes, I, I know that um, our constituent services director Lynn, she does have information on that, so I'll bring that back to her. And so if she needs to do any update with him, uh, we'll get that done.
The last person that called me was crying, cause they said, oh, it's only weeds growing back now. It's so bad. So uh, I don't know who's saying what to who, but um, that one is gonna be a problem as, as time goes on.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Are there any other uh questions from anybody for uh, the council members representative? Hearing none, uh, thank you very much, Lisa, for your report. We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
The, next up, we have uh Governor Josh Green's representative. Do we have someone from the governor's office?
Um, yes, this is Action Songs with the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you very much. Please go ahead.
Perfect. I think you guys are used to Will. Um, he's unavailable tonight, but I have sat in before, so thank you all for having me again. Actually live in the neighborhood, so it's really nice to hear all of these updates as well. But I went ahead and posted the governor's newsletter, a link to it within the chat, so I recommend everybody check it out. There's some good information in there on the coconut rhino beetles, affordable housing on Kauai, lots more. It's talks about the beginning of Festpac, which I know is now over, but I hope some of you had the chance to attend or at least watch virtually. It was a great celebration. Um, but that's it. I'm happy to take any questions up.
Uh, thank you. Well, first off, let me uh, if you'd pass along our thank you to Will for uh, setting up the DOT representative that's here this evening. He set that up, so, so the board knows. Very, we appreciate it. Uh, do, are there any questions for the governor, governor's representative from the board? Or from the community? Hearing none. Thank you very much for your report and uh, give Will, Will our regards. Thank you.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have uh Senator Carl Rhodes, and I see the senator with us tonight. So, hello, Senator.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
A pretty short report tonight, actually. Um, every time I think we can completely relax about COVID, we get another spike. And last week, Department of Health reported one thousand three hundred and thirty new COVID cases with a seven-day average of a hundred and seventy-two cases. No deaths, but of course deaths are a lagging indicator, so probably not out of the woods completely. Uh, so we are experiencing something of a surge, so I encourage you to stay up to date on your COVID shots and, and your flu shots. And if you're over sixty like me, you know, you might also wanna get a vaccine for respiratory sinsh- sensicial virus, which is uh, which I did get already. Um, for the last couple of years, we've used a little bit of our alleged allowance to try to take care of um, rooster hotspots. So if you, if you have any, um, let me know what they are and I'll, we'll, we'll try to help out with uh, keeping the noise down for residents. Uh, my phone number is five eight six six one three zero, five eight six six one three zero. Or this, the email is uh, senrhoads, S E N R H O, ads at capital dot Hawaii dot gov. Happy to hear from anybody anytime.
Thank, thank you. I know uh, Paula, earlier I expressed some kudos about the state legislature, so I don't know if uh, if she wants to bring that back up, but uh, do we have any comments from, from our board? Our questions? Uh, any comments from the community? Well, I think it was in relation to, uh, oh, you're right. Sorry, I sorry, I don't mean to diminish. I I forgot exactly what it was, but but Sylvia, go ahead.
Oh, Senator Rhodes, nice to have you back. And also, I'm back to wearing my mask. Boy, I I have known so many people that have had COVID. And they said this strain is bad because they said that some of my friends have been sick for two weeks, feeling really bad. I mean, just like, I guess, when COVID first started. They thought they were gonna die. It was so bad. So I've been staying away from everybody.
Well, fortunately, we're in a much better position than we were four years ago when the whole thing first started. But, uh, yeah, it just doesn't seem to really want to go away. So, uh, yes, be careful.
Thank, thank you. Is there anything else, uh, for the Senator from anybody?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead. Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear who that was.
That's just, this is me, Paula.
Go ahead, Paula.
Uh, Senator, um, I think in the past, we lost the money for Wood Street. I mean, we're gonna get, see, our people are gonna get sick of it. Sick, sick, sick of it. Um, but we, I want to know if if you folks are thinking about looking into this again, even though the monies were done away with last year. Because it's getting to be a serious problem here because of no bus, got to cross the highway. And some of the people that are elderly are using cabs, which are, they're taking them down to catch the bus somewhere else. It costs twelve dollars. So that is one problem. If you could look into it again, I don't know which who I would talk to that would be on this, on the highway deal division. And number two is, um, I forgot what it was. Oh, God, I'm getting old. Um, uh, helmets. People going back and forth on this helmet bill. Three times, just like the, the light over here. Getting kids to wear helmets. And then I know this bicycle league got it passed, but the motor scooters and the other people have not gotten it passed. So I'm wondering why should we fill up our hospital beds if people can't wear a helmet regularly? And if you could work on that bill, or whoever you know that you could refer it to, it'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the the first part, the last part first, yeah, I I did introduce a bill at your request last year, uh, for helmets for, um, you know, micro, micro mobility devices. It didn't go anywhere, but, uh, we'll certainly, I'll certainly consider putting it in again next year. Um, I guess you're, I guess you're talking about the crosswalks on Poly. I I wasn't quite sure.
I'm talking about everything on the Poly that's wrong. And, uh, until I get DOT.
Well, I think you're, I think you've got that on the agenda, uh, later. I mean, I, at this point, for the for the, for the money for the crosswalks, I I don't think there's any point in me trying to get it again if if DOT is not going to spend it. So we'll see what, we'll see what they say later today.
I'm not talking about.
Yeah, it'll be just a few minutes and that'll come up, Paula. So that, that, please hold that thought. Um, and and we'll address it in just a few minutes. Uh, okay. So Sylvia, oh, I'm sorry, Paula, were you done or?
I just gonna, for what he's gonna do in the future. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I mean, if it regards Poly, let's talk about it, you know, when with the DOT representative, in just a few minutes.
Helmets. Helmets.
Oh, the helmets.
Yes.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to put the bill back in. I can't promise that it will pass, but I I'll put it back in.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Sylvia. Sylvia, did you address that or?
No, I didn't. Follow up on what, um, Ms. Paula was saying. Carl, I know I brought it up with, um, Reggie, but can we get federal funds for our Polly Highway?
Um, I mean, I mean, the, I I think the answer is yes. Uh, it would, there, there's a process. There's a long process for making improvements to the, to the highway system. But yeah, federal money gets used for that all the time.
Because with what Senator Schatz is talking about the federal transportation money, I thought maybe that was something that we should tap on for this year.
It's, I mean, DOT can speak to it too, but there, you have, there's a, there's a process and that's most of what the Department of Transportation's budget comes from is from, uh, federal highway funds. So, um, they can use, if if they make it a priority, they can, uh, make improvements to Polly Highway with that money.
Well, what's the process to get us to the top of the list?
Uh, we're not on the list at all right now. So I don't know.
Oh, wow. So you know, that's what I want to know. How we get on that list and get us to top of the list as soon as possible.
Yeah, I I think this discussion probably needs to wait because you, you're, you're all, you, everybody in this meeting is aware that I already got the money twice and DOT refused to spend it. So I I don't know what else to do. You know, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. So I'll, I'll, I'll let others talk about it.
Yeah, let, let, if we could postpone this discussion of the Poly Highway.
I see, you see that, um, I don't, on our agenda, under board business, which is the one on A.
Yeah, but we haven't gotten there yet. That's, that's kind of the point. So if we can hold off.
To address that, right? Is that what George is gonna address tonight?
Yes.
Yes, uh, that's what's on the agenda and he is here for that. He is the representative of the Department of Transportation.
And I don't know if Carl was made aware from last month's meeting what my suggestion was that DOT and the governor and the mayor, whoever, even you, Carl, are invited to walk across the Polly Highway during these peak hours and try to get across the street and see how dangerous it is.
Uh, I have done it before and and even as an reasonably able bodied person, it's terrifying. And, um, obviously dangerous from what's happened there in the past. So, um, you don't have to convince me.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have anything, uh, further from anybody for the Senator? Uh, here, hearing none, uh, thank you, Senator Rhodes. If, uh, maybe you could stick around for a few minutes. We have the discussion. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next up, we have Representative Jenna Takano Nucci. Jenna, please go ahead.
Hey, everybody. Okay, um, okay, uh, just to follow up quickly on some of the ongoing things on my list for this board, um, Paula, um, I still don't have an update about the crossing signs for New Uwana Elementary School, but I have Kelton following up, um, on that every once in a while, and we'll keep it on our list to kind of look into until we get, um, a final response about that. Uh, we were told that New Uwana Stream around the Pueva Bridge, some of the maintenance was completed. Um, I know not, it wasn't done. So something happened and I know I got calls afterwards that there was still an issue. So I put in a second request recently, um, for the vegetation issue, um, actually. Um, I still, uh, I don't think Jill's on yet, but I'm still waiting on the final report from DLNR that we requested that she wanted to see about, um, what went into their, uh, you know, evaluation that they weren't able to step in to do anything about the tree cutting. And then, uh, some good news for the pathway for the Papakalea kids, um, trying to walk down to, um, or elementary school, uh, from A Wile Lemo Street down to the school. We actually went today. Uh, some of the board members came with me, uh, Megan Kaapuni and Mike. And DOT had already kind of gone out and scouted the area. Um, previously, they said they are going to be able to help us using some of the Safe Road to Schools funds to both kind of pave over the area on both sides of that little canal, as well as reinstall the bridge, um, across the canal so the kids can, you know, cross safely without, you know, jumping in and out of the canal or trying to jump the gap in the canal. So that was a really good news. Um, they're hoping to kind of do that within the next, um, couple of months to get started, actually. Um, hopefully that's true. I know some of these projects get, um, uh, sidetracked, but I'll be following up with them regularly. That would be really great to get that before the start of the school year. Um, and then oh, uh, we got some word that, uh, I guess if anybody knows any students who are looking to study health related fields or social work, Aloha Care has a healthcare, uh, scholarship program that's available for a next, uh, couple more weeks until the end of the month, June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Um, I'll put the link into the chat. If you know anyone you want to forward that to, to give them a little bit of help as they're kind of going through school. And okay, and just a reminder, um, about the unclaimed property program. This is the first year, um, so on July first, twenty twenty four, we're gonna start sweeping unclaimed property requests that are ten years or older. Um, so this is money that, you know, you might be owed when somebody couldn't find you. Um, I know I have in the past gotten, you know, like some money from my former insurance companies, or these are things in like your safe deposit box if they can't find you, or deposits from utility companies, things like that. It's an easy process. You can just check online. You just put your name in and it pulls the records that we have, um, that the state's holding this money for you. You fill out a quick form, you get it notarized, and then you can be, um, reunited with your money. So I will put that link into the chat as well. Um, that's kind of all I have for this month. If anybody has any questions or any additional follow up I can take back.
Thank you. Do we have any, uh, questions from the board?
I have.
Go ahead, Paula.
What is the time limit on turning our names in to find out if we hit, hit the, hit the rich button? Is there a time limit to, are they talking twenty years, thirty years, forty years?
For what?
Is there a limit on applying for our money?
Uh, unclaimed?
So right now, this is the first year. So it, it, if you check now, it's for everything we have. I think this is the first year that they're gonna start sweeping anything that's ten years or older. So at, uh, July first, they're gonna sweep the fund for any monies that they have, you know, from twenty fourteen and before. And then annually, they're only gonna keep ten, ten years worth of records and funds. So this is a good year to check now. And then, you know, I I just check every once in a while when I remember, just in case there's something, but I I don't think it comes up too often, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry. I I know you sent something in the mail, but how exactly do you do that to get your money?
Yeah, so there's instructions online. Um, if, when you search it, if it's, if you have funds, there's a second link that just says, if you download the form, you just get the form notarized. It says, you know, they just need to verify who you are. Um, if you're gonna try and claim the funds, and then you just mail it to the state and the state will send you the check.
How do you get the form?
It's online. I'll, I'll put the link into the chat.
Okay, um, because, um, I have many seniors here that are asking, but they don't have computers. They have no cell phone.
I can see, oh, let me check if they have a phone number. Maybe they can call, um.
Well, that would be great. Yes. That would be really good.
Uh, yeah, or maybe, sorry, I'll follow up what the options are if you can't go online, how you get that searched down. Uh, maybe I can send that to the board, um, after the meeting.
Yeah, they were asking me and they're eighty seven years old and older, but for me, uh, I just, I'm not a TT. I'm a TT, terrible check. So I'm telling them, maybe there is an easier way for you instead of being on a cell phone. Unless they gotta have their kids come and do it for them.
Yeah, I have to follow up, but I'll send that information to the board, um, after the meeting.
Yeah, they always forget the seniors that don't have cell phones.
Thank, thank you. Um, are there any other, uh, questions for the representative? I see, um, Adrian.
Yes. Uh, hi, Jenna. I'm not sure if it's you or Tyler or who, but I'm trying to follow up on the speed bump in traffic, uh, commas that were supposed to be put in front of the Papakalea Community Center. So one of you guys said it was approved, but we were waiting for something to happen further up Tatlus. And they would do it all at one time, but it's been quite a while. And so we still are wanting over a decade later to find out when we can get speed bumps by the community center. Uh, because the kids are running, as we said before, across the street to the park and they're speeding up and down Tatlus. And now that we have the new playground, the playground has been redone, even more so the traffic of the kids, especially now summer. They're gonna be running back and forth and we'd like to know, are they coming? So the speed bumps and traffic commas were to be stayed in front or near the park.
Yeah, I, I, I remember that project. Yeah, I was really happy that we were gonna get those. Um, I think Councilmember's office was lead on that, but I'll jump, I'll, I'll send him a quick email and check in and see if he has any additional information. I think Lisa logged off already. But yeah, I'll check in with, um, his office and see if they have a timeline or if they have any other information that they can.
They're saying that they were waiting for action for bumps up Tatlus so they could contract, contract the builder at one time, but that's been quite a while since that was the last thing we heard. It's been over six months. So thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Are there any, uh, other questions or concerns from anybody for, uh, the representative?
Just thank you.
Yeah, hearing none. Uh, thank you very much, Jenna. We appreciate you coming out this evening and joining us. Thank you. So next up on our agenda, we have, uh, do we have any other elected officials either federally or otherwise? Hearing, hearing none, uh, we're ready to move on with our board business. Uh, during our board business, we are asked to conduct business with our video camera. If if the board members could do that, if if it's possible, if you're having, uh, limited internet or technical problems, then it's understandable. So, uh, first up is our Q and A session with the representative of the Department of Transportation regarding traffic safety issues around Polly Highway and, uh, George, George, I forget your last name. I'm sorry, but Cheryl introduced himself.
Hi, everybody. Uh, George Abciti, uh, highways administrator. So I'm, I guess.
Did you, yeah, did you have anything you want to say or so?
No, we can start.
So, yeah, this was in, uh, as everybody may remember from last month, this was our, we, as we had earlier in the meeting, we have a number of concerns about Polly Highway. So this is our chance to have someone very knowledgeable from DOT here. And we can ask them some questions about their plans or whatever we want to. This is the time. So our board members, uh, who wants to take the first step? Heard a lot earlier, so this is your chance.
Well, now we're supposed to talk?
Yes, go ahead, Paula.
Okay, um, I know George and I, uh, go to the same church, so he sings great, but I gotta get back to the Polly Highway because it's just an infectious uh, P Lao situation with speeding, which we discussed earlier with the police. But getting across at Wood Street and, um, the other streets, Upper Dalset, et cetera, we had the money and, uh, Senator Rhodes mentioned that, uh, evidently using old money. So I want to know what is, what are you folks gonna do for us that we've already lost our bus? And if we have to go across, which I cannot right now because I just broke my back, um, go across six lanes of traffic in six o'clock in the morning and it's pitch black yet. And then take out our light at the, at the, the place where you catch the bus. It's just nonsense already for us. And the grass that grows around all the bus stops, nobody's, doesn't seem to be getting it straight. I had four phone calls this last week just about grass. And how the homeless like to sleep in it. And I know we And how the homeless like to sleep in it. And I know we went through this before. Um and they came and they had come about two, three days right after a big rain. So what are we gonna do and how are we gonna get across? Because I can't even use my HoloCard to get to downtown. And then on top of that, the money that we were supposed to get for the going for our light for the for Wood Street. I understand it went to Hart, H A R T. And I guess Ompo would know where that money went. That would be Ray G to figure that out, but why do we keep getting dealt with a raw hand? I'm sick of it already. And I'm tired of people saying, oh, the Polly Highway is great. I can go as fast as I want. I can so go along and it's so beautiful now. Well, that you might have increased the speed, but you forget about the pedestrians. And so I wanna know, are you receiving money from visioning and other places to send it off to Hart so we don't get the money? Or what is happening to us? We are in a situation here where are seeing my seniors, especially in this area, who are in their eighties and nineties are catching a cab to go catch another bus. So um how are we? How are you folks reuniting us with the bus and the light and the crossings? Instead of keep on putting those stupid humps that only crack cement on the houses? Like they did Kalanioli Highway many, many years ago, but George, you wouldn't remember that cuz you're you're too young. Um that that situation cracked in houses and if you keep on putting in all these things, the best thing for do is put a raised sidewalk. And at the bottom of that raised sidewalk, when the car goes over, put a hole there and make the car go in a hole. That's how you wanna slow people down and get the situation under control. We cannot cross safely. And it's been brought up many times, many times for thirteen years, I swear. Um to uh get across the Polly Highway safely and then they even take our bus out. So do you coordinate with DOT and with um the other agencies that service our community? We're being left out every single time. And when there is money, it's given away to somebody else. And that's not fair. Thank you.
So regarding the monies or the lights, um yeah, and and unfortunately, I don't have any better news for you. I mean, cuz we were planning on putting in another speed uh raised crosswalk at that location. Uh for us, we, yeah, I know. Uh well, just some background. I mean, since twenty nineteen, we put in uh over two hundred of these uh all over the state. And actually, of all the mid of all the uh speed mitigation efforts or uh countermeasures that we put in, this is actually the most effective. You know, we put in we put in signals, we put in flashing lights, and people were still getting killed. The problem is the speeding, right? I would say we have thirty percent is speeding. The other six, uh there there's another thirty or forty percent which is impaired driving. And but we know that that impaired driving involves speed because they're not controlling what they're doing. So really, we start to control speed and uh that you know the impaired driving. Uh we can, we're you know, we're hoping to at least control sixty, you know, lessen the the number of fatalities by sixty percent. And the only thing that we found that really does that that effectively slows down uh speeding by ten to twenty percent are these raised crosswalks. Now, in regards to the monies uh for these uh crosswalks, uh yeah, I mean Senator Rhodes did his part. He he uh put the allocations for those monies. Unfortunately, we get those requests every year and we if there's more requests, then we have money. Having been in this position, which is statewide, you know, the administrator have to cover statewide and I cannot, even though I live in the area, I cannot just put monies where and it's hard because I know there was a fatality in twenty eighteen. But there's places like the Leeward Coast where they have thirty times that amount. You know, and there's 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 just too many community communities with a greater, unfortunately for us with a much greater need. Uh of the of the fatalities this year, there's fifteen fatalities with vehicle concerning speedy vehicles and motorcyclists and twelve of them alone are on the Big Island. I have to do something on. I have to spend money on the Big Island to start preventing some of these things. So I cannot always spend it here. And like I said, there's too many. There's too many requests and not enough money. Unfortunately, that same pot of money comes from uh the monies that we have to deal with with landslides and fires and whatnot. And we've had some pretty big events over the last two or three years. Those take up our our monies as well, the 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 state shares that we used to to spend on that. Uh where we don't have enough to even put out a lot of the projects that we need to do. The monies that went to Hart was all federal monies. The monies that Senator Rhodes got for us was state money. So it's the different monies, actually pools of monies and meant for different things. The monies that went to Hart are are were meant for federal transportation, were for meant for transportation projects or and so it went to where it's supposed to go. There's while it's a lot of money, the monies are targeted for certain things. And so that's that money that went to Hart was actually targeted for that those kind of projects. Now, um you know, we we put out in federal monies, we get about hundred. When we when I first started this position three or four years ago, uh we were getting a hundred and eighty million dollars in federal monies and and we add a twenty percent share to that. Uh since then, Director Sniffin has been able to get us what much more money. Where we, you know, we're we're getting almost three hundred million and it's still it's still not enough. You know, we we used to pump out two or three hundred million dollars worth of work. Now we're pumping out four to five hundred and we can't keep up. Unfortunately, uh but we're still trying to get more monies as much as we can in the state. Unfortunately, we've hit a we've kind of hit a wall when it comes to resources in the state. Uh we're maxing out the resources of the consultant agencies. We're having to go look at the mainland to to get our designs done. Uh but more importantly, the the contractors cannot keep up with the work that we're trying to do. And so there's some of that issue as well, but there's there's a lot of money. There's a lot of money out there, but the need is much greater than the resources we have. So uh and it's not just the police. It's there's other places where there's much greater fatality rates. So uh and that's where we're at right now. Uh I am willing to you know, there's other things we could probably add on. Like I have to talk to my people, whether it be flashing lights or uh some other things that would probably help the situation. So I I'll definitely look into that. And I'm willing to, you know, if if some, you know, if you, I mean, I live there. I know what it's like. Willing to bring my guys there if you want and and cross that place to show them and to see if there's other things we can do.
Thank you. Uh Paula, did you wanna follow up?
Oh, yeah, I got lots to say, but um wanna keep it clean. You know what I mean? Um um that Polly Highway, you know, you can tell me where this money is and where that money is. We've been waiting for how long to get safety? And I wanna know, everybody's getting money for pedestrians, pedestrians, pedestrians. So where does the money go? It goes to Hart. That's not pedestrians. That's transportation on the other side of the world, not for us. And I'm gonna tell you a story. Many years ago, when I was younger, at Jack Lane, we had flashing lights. We had a really good system going. But where did the flashing lights go? It went to Leeward. And so we were left without. Then you had to have all these people come in and threaten that they're gonna do something unless you get a light at Jack Lane. That's how the light at Jack Lane was put in. And then also at um what's that? La Emi Road, same thing. The seniors asking for help getting lights just across the highway. And it doesn't seem like anyone's listening to us. And you can say, oh, yeah, we had one fatality in twenty eighteen which was unwarranted. And yes, you can talk about speeding. That's why I also talk about DOJ. Uh whether we gotta go talk to the judges or not, um somebody gotta look at looking at the pedestrians. This is a community. It's not a Indianapolis Speedway. Or one of those places in Germany where you don't look at the sign, you just speed where you wanna go, the bond or whatever it's called. And I'm sick of people saying, well, we don't have money. But yet you can. Everybody else gets what they want and we got nothing, nothing. Now we don't even have a bus. So what happens between the city, the state, the federal? Who is gonna help us before somebody else gets killed? And I saw it on TV on another forty nine Olelo. Olelo has really good stuff to watch. And on Olelo, where another system came out, I think it was in Kailua, where they had a problem with the same kind of thing pedestrian crossing and they got what they wanted right away. All we want is a light. What's wrong with getting a light, for God's sakes? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Um Sylvia. Uh Sylvia, you're still muted.
Okay.
Okay.
Now George, you know, I heard it loud and clear and the reason we didn't get our light is because it went somewhere else. What bothers me the most is that the senator went out specifically to put in to to get us this money to allocate for the purpose of having that light. And you guys went and used it for something else instead of using our money for what we fought with the state to get. And that's what bothers me. That you used our money that was allocated for this light for something else. And now we're just back to square one. And you know, with that, and you're saying that maybe because not as many people died on Polly Highway as it in another street. But you know, one life on Polly Highway is one too many.
Right.
But that that was what bothered me about um this whole situation is that we get all these excuses, but no action. And
Get your grant.
Is your department head and the governor and all these people walking across the Polly Highway like the residents need to walk across Polly Highway? During this peak period? So that's what I think needs to be done because there's several people. Senator Rhodes crossed it. Kim Hashiro from the city crossed it. Now, what about the people from the state that's making this decision? Are you putting your lives on the line like the residents of New Uwano?
Um thank you. Do you wanna say anything? Okay. Uh do do we have any um does anyone else wish to be heard? Any of the board members or members of the community? Uh Pat, please go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Um you know, George, when you have your people try to cross the highway, make sure they cross by themselves individually. Because crossing as an entourage will cause the people to slow down and rubberneck. So you can't have them crossing in a group. That's not going to work. They also need to cross during the week when there's traffic, people trying to get to work and not on a holiday and not on the day after or the day before a holiday because the traffic is less because a lot of people go on vacation. And you need to cross when it's dark or different times of the day. Because people go to work and they're they're leaving their houses and crossing Polly Highway very early in the morning like I do. Um if you are going to wear safety equipment in order to get across the highway more safely, then you should be forced to carry it around with you all day long. Because that's what I have to do. Okay? And try crossing when it's windy and raining and see how that goes. When people are driving and they don't know how to drive in the rain, they're even more careless. Um but try this and then try it by somehow disabling yourself so that you understand what people who are disabled or seniors and have difficulty moving, you can understand what it feels like for them. So if you can do that, that would be great. Because then you'll experience what it's like to cross Polly Highway. And there's also the other thing about driver's education. A lot of people don't know how to drive. They don't know that they need to put headlights on because that's what they're there for when it's still dark out. I can be covered head to tail to the bottoms of my with reflective material. But if their headlights are not on, then it's not reflecting anything. And I see too many people driving without their headlights when it's still dark. So that's one thing. Also, um they don't know what to do at crosswalks. They don't know they're supposed to stop. They're they don't know that they're not supposed to go around the cars that are already stopped for pedestrians. They just don't know the rules. Which makes it very, very difficult. And the worst part is, even if they knew what to do at the crosswalks, they don't know that the crosswalk is there. Years ago, and I am showing my age, but they used to have flashing lights. It was just a single flashing light above the crosswalk to let people know that there was a crosswalk there. Unfortunately, with the um high speed that people traverse down Polly Highway, you're gonna have to uh make it more than one light. But you need to get their attention. You need to get the driver's attention that there is a crosswalk there. People don't know that there's crosswalks. That's why they just speed through and they look at me and they wave. It's ridiculous. So we need to do something about that, too. Educate the drivers. Make it easy for the drivers to see that there's a crosswalk there. And what they're supposed to and what they're not supposed to do at the crosswalk. It's very important. And we need to teach people how to how to drive because people don't know how to drive. Because if they did, they we wouldn't have be having these accidents. We wouldn't be having these speedings. We wouldn't have people who just don't care. Because these people feel that it's a privilege to drive when it's not. It's no, they feel that they have the right to drive any way they want to. And it's a privilege that we should be able to take away from them. If they speak too much, if they've been um ticketed or gone to court too much, they should have their licenses revoked. And the penalties for driving without a license should be very, very high. A lot of people, they just pay their fine. But we need to have them uh really feel it that what they did was wrong and what they did kills people. So we need that assistance from the state and from the city to stop bad drivers. And that might alleviate the need to have all of these. to have all of these different methods of trying to slow them down all around the island. And basically, it's because people don't care and they speed and they think that they can do whatever they want on our roadways, which is wrong. And we need to let them know that it's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank, thank you, Pat. Does anyone else wish to be heard or have any questions or comments? Ka- Ka'apuni. You're, you're muted, Ka'apuni.
Hi, um, so I, I just have a question. Can, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, if you could speak up just a tad. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I hope you guys can hear me better.
Yes.
So I just had a question. I agree, Poly Highway is very important and safety of pedestrians. I, so I'm just wondering. You know, they're gonna be saying, right, and show the budget based on the data. You know, the money's not going this way. Okay. Has the community ever raised funds? Because I think for me, right, like if New O'Wanu, and it's yes, it's our tax dollars and all this kind of stuff. But has a community ever raised money to install that? Because I think the only way we could really dedicate that is if we raise that. Or that's just an idea for me, right? So that even if it's allocated to us, it might not land, which was, which is what had happened with Car Rhodes' action. I'm just asking, right? Like, is there a number that as a community, if we had to gather to fundraise, people are making GoFundMes like crazy, right? But if, was that, is that even an option? That's my question. Thanks.
You know, I, I am not sure. I don't think that's something that happens. But if you're talking about an amount, it's, it used to be about eight hundred thousand, but now it's up to about two or three million per light. So that's the number you'd have to look at.
Yeah, the funding is, is a lot. Unfortunately.
Especially after COVID with all the, they changed the way the, uh, the, the manufacturing, they, they don't have anything in stock anymore. They just build it as it's needed. And so it takes time, first of all, but the expense has really tripled the, the cost.
Thank you. Next up, I see Ray G.
Hi, um, George, thank you for attending our meeting and making our, the presentation. Since I'm the transportation member that goes to Oahu MPO, I just wanted to ask you, how transparent is your department in listing your projects, like these local projects in relation to state funding? I used to work for the city, so I know the city process and how to acquire federal funds and, and all that. But how does the state, like, how would we know whether your state funds, what just the projects are applicable and gonna be? What projects will be planned this year? Or even just project status, like, other than the tip and the stip? Is there any other way that your department lists what projects locally will be done, like smaller projects? Like what we're talking about mitigation of rockfall and adding intersection lights, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, on the DOT website, there's actually, there's actually a list of projects or there's a map with projects that are soon to start or, or are in progress for, or construction. We also have a Sopra web page. I can get the link for that and send it to everyone. There's, there's an Act 100 report that shows the same thing, projects that are upcoming and projects starting that are in construction in each, in each senatorial representative district for the state. So you can see the projects, the amounts and the kind of like a short synopsis of what, what they, what they described. If you want to look at the longer term stuff, the stip is probably the way to go. Yeah, and, and, and I think you mentioned earlier, if we need to get projects in there, projects, if they're not on the stip and the tip, they, they won't get federal funds. And so with our state funds being short ended, you know, we, we really need the, the federal funds. So a lot of the projects, if we were to do something like this, would have to be federally funded. So we would have to get it on the stip.
Understood.
Yeah, okay, great. I will.
I'm sorry, can you say the last part? You would have to get it. I heard federal funds, then you said something. You would have to get it.
Maybe the stip, you might want to explain what that is or.
Yeah, so the State Transportation Improvement Plan with the STIP for short is basically when it comes to getting the federal funds, which is normally eighty percent of the project. You have to put it on the State Transportation Improvement Plan, which is basically the listing of all the projects that are coming up for the next several years. I believe it's six or something like that, but it's the, the four, the four years are pretty much set. So if it's, you can't get federal funds, you can't even apply for federal funds if it's not on that list. So normally the projects, what we do is we get a a mid-range plan, which is basically a ten-year plan of projects coming up. And then we put it, we, we take a look at that, we fiscally constrain it and then not, not just fiscally constrain it, but we also score it according to a bunch of different needs that we have, you know, like, and safety is one of them. And so it gets a rating and then, then we have to fiscally constrain that, then we go through the budgeting process. But all of that is in conjunction with the stip, so. Again, we can't get federal funding if it's not on the stip.
Did that clear it up? If there are any other questions, we can, George can extrapolate or explain further. Hearing none. So Sylvia.
Oh, okay. You know, um, I have a question. Has the State Department of Transportation worked with the State Driver's License Bureau to work out a driver's education program for people that were disabled and are after rehabilitation can get the driver's license back again? Because that happened to me. And, um, when I had my stroke, the doctors said absolutely no driving. And during that whole year of trying to get recovery to the stage where I was strong enough and able to feel that I could drive again, I went and checked with all the rehab hospitals, the driver's license places and tried to get a, into a class that to recertify myself in driving to see if I was going, you know, how safe I was on the road. And there's absolutely nothing here. They used to have one at rehab of the Pacific and that was discontinued just before COVID. So I'm wondering if when these people renew, some of these people that renewed their license, you asked that question about certain disabilities. And I don't know if people, people lie, you know, but I'm just not one of them. So when I finally, the doctor said, okay, you can drive again. I went down to renew my license and when I got back my license after a little over a year, what I did was I only practiced driving around my neighborhood in non-peak hours to make sure that I was safe on the road. But I don't think people feel that way. But I think that the state should put in along with the driver's education and all of this stuff, some kind of program to recertify people. And maybe that would help a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Drivers off the road.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I certainly can look into it. We, we support the city when it comes to the, the the driver's license program. But I can see if we have any say in the, the education part of it.
Thank you. Senator Rhodes.
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify that the, the money that I got for the crosswalks on the Poly was only for the crosswalks on the Poly. It was not spent anywhere else. It, that was not money that could be used anywhere else. The budget specifically said it had to be used for specifics crosswalks, specific cross streets on the Poly. There were no federal funds involved. And that was, and so the stip was irrelevant. It was an additional, it was additional money given to the Department of Transportation. They chose not to spend the money. I don't know why. I've never understood it. It was extra money for their budget that they wouldn't have gotten otherwise. And, you know, I, so a, all this stuff about there, there, you have to be on the stip. You, if you want federal money, you have to, it has to be there. That's all true. But the money that I got was not federal money. It was state money. It was an addition to the, uh, an additional amounts to the money that they would normally get through the federal, through the federal stuff. And of course, it, it's all the same money. It's all, it's all taxpayers' money. It's not like the federal money comes from somebody else. I mean, to, to the extent that it comes from, from other states, maybe we get more than we pay out. I don't think so. I think Hawaii is one of those. Well, that's not true. I think Hawaii does get a little more than we pay. We pay, we get in more than we pay out. So yes, it's nice to transfer some of those expenses to the rest of the, to the country, but it's still all taxpayers' money and we weren't asking for federal funds. So just wanted to be sure everybody's clear about that. It was a decision by DOT not to build the crosswalks, even though they were given extra money to do it.
Yes, the Senator, Senator did his part. Yes.
Is, does anyone else wish to make a comment or have a question?
Yes.
Go ahead, Paula.
I, I, I'm sorry about getting so emotional about all this, but after having so many people in this neighborhood who've died, I think somebody down there at DOT, and I'm tired of Mr. Sniffin' talking about putting in crosswalks or whatever they call it, raised so cars can go safely over but not destroy properties around it. Every location, every location needs to be assessed in a special way as to whether, what is appropriate to that area. Now, all these ti- times you keep talking about raised sidewalk, raised sidewalk. Oh, a statistics show it's so great and everything. But in New O'Wanu, it's not working because they're still going at a high rate, high rate of speed. And you gotta get us some lights. And I don't know what kind of lights, if we have to go out and string lights across the street like we did at Jack Lane, what are we gonna do this? And, and the other part about the highway is there's so much grass, you don't even know if there's somebody living in the grass. And the highway is supposed to be a beautiful place to come into New O'Wanu. You see it on the sign for the first pile of rocks, which has been now destroyed because all the hibiscus plants are gone. And Wa'akanaka, same way. They're coming in there at sixty-five miles, sixty, sixty-five miles an hour. Who is gonna take safety by looking at a pile of rocks? You know what I mean? And that was done visioning with Mayor Harris a long time ago. So there's some way we gotta do is get a light at every single post in New O'Wanu, light it up like Christmas and stop these guys from doing their speeding. If you folks aren't gonna give us a light, we want a light where we can cross. A light. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further? Does anyone want to add anything while the DOT rep is here?
Thank you, George. Sorry, I'm getting.
No, no problem, Paula. No, I understand.
Yeah, this is obviously a, a very difficult issue because, you know, we have problems in our community, but, you know, the state also has to look at the whole state. So we definitely do appreciate you coming out this evening.
I heard.
Hearing from us.
I heard somebody say, oh, the road is so good now. I can go as fast as I want. They fixed the road instead of leaving all the potholes. Maybe they should just leave potholes and then people will start slowing down. But without a light, we can't do it. We can't maneuver. That's for sure. No light, huh? Nobody can walk that, cross that street at my age. Thank you.
Okay, well, there again, I, I wish to thank George for, for coming out this evening. Obviously, for fielding some tough questions and, and hearing our concerns. So we, we appreciate it. I don't know if you have any closing thoughts, but we thank you for your time and coming out this evening.
Thank you. And I can come back next month and provide some follow-up.
That would be great. We would, we would certainly invite that. So thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Next up on the agenda, we have the potential expansion of the number of city dog parks. If you recall, the, uh, last month, I think Councilmember Tyler Disupto's team just, a- as I recall, and I don't want to misstate his position, as I recall, he was just sending out sort of a, it was more of a questionnaire, like, are people interested as far, as opposed to, I don't know that there's a, a proposal on the table to make any changes. I think he was just asking if, if, if we as a community thought anything should be added. Thank you, George. So if anyone would like to address that. Adrian, go ahead, please.
Thought he had said, he had sent out the information that he had to preclude them making decisions so that we would have the opportunity to have some input. And so I would like to recommend or ask that we consider that they not make Booth Park a dog park. That something be done formally so that a part, a part of that park is not set aside for dogs. They have certain ones on the list that are, certain ones that are not. And to have part of that fenced out for dogs to just preempt that being even considered. And I don't know how to, to formalize that request or if that's possible. But I think. Go ahead.
Um, you could make, you could move for the neighborhood, our neighborhood board. We don't need to do a resolution, but we can write a letter to the council member our opposition to making Booth Park a dog park. How about that? Do you want to make such a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that this board write a letter to Councilman Town that Booth Park not be made a dog park.
Do we hear a second? Okay, thank you. And, uh, well, you've, you've kind of already, I, I think, talked in favor. Does anyone, is anyone opposed to that or would not be in favor of that decision by the board?
Um.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Sylvia.
I second Adrian's motion because I totally agree that Booth Park should not be a dog park. But I looked through that list and I noticed there are some other parks within our area that we, we might want to consider, but, and I think they said that the Wai'olemo Park was a dog park. If I was mistaken, that park is a dog park already. But, um, I think that beside Booth Park, we should look at the parks within our neighborhood board, like, um, Queen Emma Park and places like that to see if those could be under consideration or we want it eliminated from being under consideration.
Okay.
And like even Kauanaka School, the park. Um, and like even Kauanaka School, the park at Kauanaka School was another location that they were looking at a possibility.
Well, what we could do is there is a motion on the floor to to just talk about to send a letter regarding Booth Park. I don't know what the timetable is. My understanding is that this was just kind of an exploratory thing, so it doesn't mean that we can't come back next month and add additional either support or say we don't want it in specific parks. So if people want to review that and they have specific suggestions as to a park they want either to encourage dog being a dog park or 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 say not to be a dog park, they can do that at that time. Um, but we do have the motion. So if anyone wants to amend it by adding something, feel free. Uh, you can try that.
Well.
So, but otherwise, we could just go forward with the motion as we have. Like I said, it doesn't preclude us from acting next month on any other park.
I I honestly feel that I'd like to amend it so that we, um, to tell them that we have several parks in our, not just specifically Booth Park, but we have other parks in our neighborhood board area that we would like to, um, review and give our opinion of which ones we feel that should not be a dog park and why.
Well, I I mean, I don't know that we need.
Okay, if this is open for discussion. Um, for me, I was specific to Booth Park because how many families go there? How many children play there? It's the only one with a pool. They have baseball and all these different things. So to just think of sharing that space, family space with dogs, it just is a concern. The other parks I can't even speak to right now, Sylvia, because I don't know where some of them are and 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 their use. So even when you say I want them apart, I don't know where that is. I know where Kauanaka is and all of that. But for me, that that booth park, that's very important. It's a beautiful park. There aren't many left that have that are kept that well, that look that way, and that have that type of family activity that goes on day in and day out. So he did say something, Tyler did say something about needing to have this done sooner than later. So to go on a fact finding mission, I don't know who's gonna do that. But if it's at the expense of we move slowly and Booth Park becomes something that they want to take some of that greenery for some dogs. It's not that I don't like dogs, but it's just, once again, the the family use of this particular part down the street from my house. I just I'm concerned.
Okay, well, thank you. I don't hear any opposition to the booth part part of it. But I see Megan, let me, uh, let's ask Megan, since she hasn't really participated or say anything, give her a chance to speak. So Megan, please go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I just Googled the leash dog parks. And yes, to Auntie Sylvia's point, Awai Olimo and Kamalalu Park are already on leash dog parks. So I think we should just focus on Booth Park at hand because that is not right now, and we would like to prevent it from becoming one. Quackling the other parks in our district in the future, I think, would take more time and more work to get them to not be dog parks. So on preventing Booth Park, we should focus on that.
Well, I will take it. So how about how about?
Okay.
I don't know if this needs to amend the motion, but we could just say we're withholding our opinion on the other, we're withholding our decisions on any other parks until we do more research. But, you know, for this time, we'd say the board takes a stand that we do not wish Booth Park to be added to be or to be made a dog friendly park or dog accepted park or whatever the language is. Is there any more discussion in that regard?
I agree.
No.
Um, okay, so are we ready for the question or is there any more discussion? So all those in favor of the motion to send a letter to the, uh, I guess, pick an email. I don't think it needs to be terribly for formal, an email or a message in some regard to the council member saying that as a board, we do not support the conversion of Booth Park to a dog allowed park. All those in favor say yea.
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 All those opposed say no. Are there any abstentions?
Be.
None. Oh, okay. So Sylvia abstains.
Well, it still passed.
Okay, it still passes. So I'll send that out. Is there any further discussion on this topic item? And so what I would suggest is for those that are concerned about this issue, please review the list of the dog parks that the council member sent out. And hopefully the decision is not required by next month. I'm not sure. If it is, then you may wish to just as a private citizen. I'm certain that the council member will take take that into, you know, good consideration. Uh, but if it's not, then we can weigh in on any parks next month. But please, please do that on your own. Ray G, I see her. Did you have something?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This is Paula.
Okay, Paula, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, you're talking about parks and what you want to do. And I know, um, Dr. only mentions Booth Park. But in our area, New Oahu Valley Park is also been, um, checked out as far as, uh, making a special thing for dogs because people in the and I remember this vividly because the person we had for neighborhood security watch was going over there to find out what was going on. Dogs running loose and people not picking up their whatever's Booth Park. You have so many children, you might have a problem with people picking up and having to be trained to do that. I think that's what the doctor's alluding to. For New Oahu Valley Park, we tried to do a a park for people in the area to get hooked off into one area away from the park itself. So people could just take their dog there and let them run loose. But we but, um, the whole neighborhood on that whole area to to take out New Oahu Valley Park. No one wanted it at New Oahu Valley Park. And we went through that. I don't forget how many years ago because I'm getting old, but just so you know, on the list, if that is on there again, that would be a good thing for the neighborhood for people that own dogs that are walking them anyway in there, but they're not looking at the signs to say, pick up your own, blah, blah, blah. You know what I mean? So.
Right.
Yeah, I want to include that in the list if I know you're doing the one park right now, but to know that this went on and the lady that was doing it uh, was really into it and we were turned down because the whole neighborhood over there, uh, said, no, they didn't want dogs in the park. But they're running loose anyway, so I don't know.
Okay, um, I would, we can continue, uh, but I would let you know that we only have twenty more minutes. So we do have to include all our business by ten o'clock. So is there, is we concluded the motion about the booth about Booth Park?
Yes.
There.
Yes.
Is there a further motion to include any other part? Paula, I wasn't really sure what you wanted to do.
Well, if talking about the whole neighborhood board, um, I just wanted to include that part to let you know the history. That's all.
Uh, okay, was that just telling us the history or you wanted to make a motion that the board?
Happened. If it's gonna come up, if somebody from our board from our neighborhood wants to have it at New Oahu, we already went through this whole thing and the whole neighborhood didn't want it.
Okay, okay. Now, Sylvia, I still see your hand up. Did you just not take it?
Yeah, because I I that's what I was gonna, I remembered too what Paula said about New Oahu Valley Park, Queen Emma Park. And another one that really was a real big concern of mine was the park, the Kauanaka Park, because that is used for the PE classes of the school. And I don't think that should be a dog park with the school kids using that field as, you know, their playground.
Okay, uh, hold on. But, you know, let's not go into what we want to do and blah, blah, blah.
Why don't we leave it on the agenda?
Yeah, make a motion. You want to make that? You want to add?
Look at that list again.
Yeah, we'll make a motion that you don't want specific parks to be are added. And I'll write that to, assuming that the board agrees, I can include that on the list to the council member. So if 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 someone wants to make a motion that we include a specific park to not allow dogs, that's fine. Let's do it.
I'll move. I'll make that motion.
To which park or parks?
For the parks in our district that we want to have the chance to go go through the the lists for our district and pick and choose.
Well, I already said that I would include in there that we're gonna look at the other.
Oh, you are? Okay, that's fine. So we don't need a motion.
Okay, well, that that's already gonna happen. That was part of what we discussed when we were talking about Booth Park. So it'll be Booth Park that we are gonna be against, and then we're going to reserve judgment on the rest of the list. You know, and follow up next month. So this would be good homework for everybody. If there's a park on that list that you do not believe should have be dogs or else on the any alternative that you strongly believe should be a dog park. And it doesn't have to be the whole thing. It could be a portion, but please be specific and bring that information in and let the board know and we can choose then. So if that completes the topic, we can move on. Thank you. So next up on the agenda is our permitting for twenty seven sixty one Pacific Heights. And I told you I'd let you know what's going on. We at the last meeting, we talked about sending a letter, but Vince sort of really developed quickly, whereas the director of DPP was involved. And they sent, uh, there's essentially three people involved in, I guess, opposing the permit, you could say, or expressing concerns about it. And that was myself. Um, uh, an architect that lives next door to the project and an attorney who is, uh, president of the Neighborhood Community Association. And so the director of DPP, director of Puna, I believe, uh, sent a letter sort of confirming that the builders had a permit. And I think this is probably what Lisa Leonardo was going to report on. That's what I suggested. But I'm sorry if she wasn't, that apparently the property owners did get the permit, but there was some suspicious activity when it came to the appeal process and that's being looked into. But by this afternoon, or let's say Friday afternoon, the three of us had a meeting with the managing director of the city, Mike Formby, and the mayor, Mayor Blangiardi. Just the five of us sat down and we talked about it. We went through it for with about for about an hour at the Honolulu Alley. And they both, both the managing director and the mayor said they would look into it. And apparently, as of this afternoon, the managing or the director of DPP um, is going to, uh, it's not reject the permit, what do they call it? Revoke it. So it's an interesting process. It's really a developing situation. Uh, so that's where we're at right now. Supposedly by tomorrow morning, it will be revoked, and that's the current status. I will say that during our meeting with the mayor, I did, it was mostly really focused on this one property. But I expressed to him some concerns about, community concerns about allowing communities to sort of get an idea of proposed building projects and maybe give some advance notice so that communities uh, could express their, let's say, concerns about projects before they start. Because, you know, it's it's sort of, DPP is very opaque. It's it's they do not let information go very easily. So and and I think we are only successful in this case because we had personal involvement by the mayor. So we definitely want to reform the process. I talked to him about some ideas. Uh, but and and that's something that I hope that we can work on. And I hope that, you know, council member, Tyler Disautos Tams will be involved in that since he was, this was kind of a pet issue of his prior to his campaigning for office, or I should say, prior to his election. So with that, are there any questions? Kathy?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Patrick, for going down there. And I didn't make it, but that that sounded like an excellent meeting. Um, there were a few emails that came in from Stanford and Dean during our meetings. So I don't know if you got them, but what, of course, what you do know is that tomorrow, the owner will be served on site with a nor, a notice of revocation. So the only, so he's gonna, they're gonna pull his permit. And the only way for him to continue with construction is to apply for a new permit. This is straight out of Don Apuna's mouth, I believe. And, um, the DPP staff person in the Capitoli office where he got his.
Um, Kathy, I would say let's that, let's not get into that.
Okay.
Yeah, there's some.
Yeah.
Issues going on, but yeah, we probably shouldn't go in there. I'm sorry. Thank you.
No, no, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? I will say, uh, this is, it was a lot of effort upon these two other individuals, but this is, I think, a really success, success for the board too, because, um, you know, it 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 was, it worked. I think it's working. So we shall see. But anyway, thank you for everybody's support. I think in the future, like I said, that the next, I don't know about this particular project and how it will unfold, but fortunately, there are a lot of very um, important eyes on this, including the mayor, personal eyes. So I I have confidence at this point that it'll be handled appropriately, but I do think going forward, there should be some proposals, but those will have to be well developed and hopefully we can do that. Are there any further questions or concerns or comments? Thank you very much. I think that was it. I don't know if our elected officials or the rub stayed around if they had anything to add, but hearing none, we can move on. Yes, Sylvia, go ahead.
Can I say something? Can we suspend the remaining, um, three items that we did not finish for board minutes till next month's meeting? Can we suspend the?
We certainly can.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the remaining three items on board minutes. Board business, I'm sorry, board business till next month.
Uh.
Because otherwise, we're not gonna make it to ten o'clock.
Yeah, and and actually, as chair, I think I have the authority to suspend those anyway because we are we are gonna approach our time limit. So I think we did talk about the capital improvement funds for the community without discussing it too much. Did anyone have anything to add on that? Because that was really incorporated into our discussions with the Poly Highway. I think that satisfied it. Okay, so does in, let me just ask real quickly, as a board, do you want me to put that on the agenda for next month? Or do we feel like, do you want me to, we're gonna have the Poly Highway follow up from DOT next month? So that will sort of be incorporated in that. Is that fine?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So if we will have definitely, we can talk about the dog parks. Um, and like I said, if each of you would go and 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 review that list if you're passionate about it, and that's both for and against. If you believe there's a subsection of a park, please let us know, but be prepared to come in and say specifically, hey, this park, I don't want dogs, or this park should be have dogs, that sort of thing. So please do that and be prepared so that we can handle that issue efficiently. Um, as far as the allowing of other districts, yeah, we can talk about that next month. And we probably do have time for the approval of the minutes. Are there any? Does anyone wish to add any, make any amendments to our proposed, our draft minutes of May twenty first? Be behind on the minutes. Didn't we skip one little time? Do you know?
We're okay.
Does anyone have any minutes? Okay. Does anyone have any minutes? Okay, well, we'll consider those, uh, um, not approved, but adopted as distributed. So we did get through that. And next, is there any other board business? Hearing none, we can go on to our announcements, our next meeting is Tuesday, July six, sixteenth. Of, and we will be the same basic, uh, format meeting here at the, at, um, Kapalama Ha. Sorry, you know where we are, we're online. So, uh, also, I would reiterate what Sylvia mentioned about the Buddhist festival on August third in Chinatown. Sounds like a great event. Are there any other announcements? Please remember next month, we will have our organizing elections, if anybody would like to run for any positions, please think about that. And without hearing anything further, I'll call the meeting adjourned, thank you very much, everybody, good meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.